Excellent, thanks Sarah. Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 6:01. And we will start with the political agents. Political agents, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, for the God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Okay, it looks like we have an adjustment. Uh, I'll make a motion to move-
Hold on, hold on Dawn. I, uh, I don't see Juliana here when we reached out to her today. Uh, she wasn't sure if she was gonna be able to attend the meeting. Um, she had, uh, it looks like she was in a car accident this weekend.
Oh no.
Yeah. So I know she wasn't in school today. Uh, but the message that I had was she was gonna try to make the meeting, but she wasn't sure.
We won't move that forward then, in hopes that she joins us before we get to any business. Uh, do we have any other adjustments?
No.
Then we'll move on. Uh, approval of minutes, uh, we have none. Uh, public comments. Uh, do we have anybody on Zoom that would like to make a public comment?
Yes, I would.
Uh, who have John Paul?
Yes.
What is yours?
Uh, I just wanted to thank the committee for starting the process of looking at the schedule at Sanford High School, and also for putting a focus on it. As this process begins, I think it's important that the lines of communications are kept open, and that Sanford considers consulting other schools in most fall, and that the proper parties are heard. Uh, if there is ever any questions, I would be more than happy to assist answering them. And I'm also looking forward to seeing what solutions are made and how this shapes Sanford High School. Thank you.
Great, well John Paul, thank you for advocating as a student. I'm always excited when that happens, and I think more students should do it, so.
Thank you.
Uh, do we have anybody else that would like to make a public comment? Uh, yeah, I'll get over that, I'll switch it up. Okay, so that's public comments. So let's move on to communications, I see none. Uh, committee reports. Mr. Nelson, the floor is yours for construction updates.
Sure, I'll start with the high school and technical center. We continue to, uh, we, um, the school department continue to address punch list items directly, and we're tracking our time and cost spent, because we're gonna charge that back to, uh, the contractor for their final payment. Uh, we do have, um, in terms of the rooftop equipment, that, um, sub, that supplier is continuing to work through issues with the units that are noted on the punch list, uh, by the owner. They have issued us, um, a report, and then our design engineer has, uh, had a chance to be able to look at that. And so, uh, if we are, uh, if they are, uh, understanding that correctly, uh, the DHUs are experiencing outside air is being pulled backwards through the exhaust fans into the unit during transition from unoccupied to occupied.
Yes.
And this is potentially the cause of what's causing those DH units to trip. And so, um, in general, the proposed changes, uh, that Briggs has put together could solve the problem, uh, but before they agree to that, they would like to know the transition from unoccupied to occupied, and how it's currently programmed with that. So they're looking, uh, to get that, uh, programming information, uh, with that. Uh, right now, there is something that is noted in that sub-report, uh, that the design operator is saying that they don't see a solution to it, uh, with that. And so it looks like we're gonna be, uh, putting a meeting together, uh, between the groups, uh, rather than going back and forth online. So we are, uh, making progress, um, on that piece. Um, but it looks like, uh, we're at a point probably where, instead of exchanging reports and emails, it's time to get us all together. So we'll work with the architect to be able to try to bring everyone together, and I will be able to provide further updates from there. Uh, any questions on the high school technical center?
Uh, it looks like we're all set here, Matt?
Uh, last week, uh, at our last meeting, I talked about the escalation claims. Uh, we did set up a meeting with our, uh, for the Sanford Pride Elementary from the subcontractor last, um, meeting. Uh, I did set up a core building committee meeting, uh, this past week with our legal counsel, uh, and they agreed, uh, that it would be best to have our attorney pursue potential settlement, uh, options, uh, with those who have escalation claims before going to a, uh, declaratory judgment, uh, regarding the escalation claims. We felt, uh, we spent time looking at those, uh, weighing, um, the pros and cons, and figured that, uh, all things considered, it would be good to, even though we feel very strong about our case, uh, in the situation, uh, that it, uh, did make sense for us at least to, uh, have our legal counsel reach out and pursue. And so that's, uh, what we're in the process of doing. I will keep people updated on that. Um, we did, um, even though the progress at Sanford Pride Elementary's been moving along, we did receive a schedule update last week that does have them slipping behind a little bit on the schedule. Notably, it's due to the work by our electrical contractor. Some of the items in the code work required by the electrical contractor have resulted in some long lead times. The electrical contractor is, um, from what we can gather, unwilling to assign additional crew to the job, as they reportedly have all their staff designated for other projects. So we continue to work that. The updated in the, the changes to the schedule are: Phase one, that area A, up with the kindergarten by the tennis courts. Um, the list execution is moved from the beginning of June to June 22nd. Phase two, that's the area B, that's the upper area near the library. That punch list execution is moved from June 9th to June 25th. Phase three, uh, area B lower, down near the gymnasium area. That punch list execution is moved from June 16th to July 2nd. And phase four, area C, punch list. Uh, area C would be that closest to Willer, uh, Memorial Gym. That has been moved from June 30th to July 9th. Um, so, um, there are, uh, we'll, we have a construction meeting this Thursday, so we'll continue to be able to get updates on the schedule. There's also other proposal requests that we've submitted to the contractor that we're waiting for their response and their proposals back. That includes work required by the electrical contractor. Largest expected work is for the electrical code items in area C. Uh, we did get, issue that pro- proposal request back at the end of April. And so, um, the contractor tells us they've asked the electrical contractor to make it a high priority item for them for the last couple of weeks, but that the electrical contractor, uh, has not responded to date. So we'll continue to push on that. Uh, as I said, progress does move along. The above ceiling inspections have been completed for area B, both upper and lower. Uh, site fencing's gonna be installed this week. The masonry work inside the building is almost completed. The boiler replacement is ongoing. The millwork deliveries are, uh, just under 100% and the, what is left is expected to arrive, um, early this week. Ceiling tile installs have begun in area B. We've completed this ceiling tile installs in area A. Painting is nearing completion throughout. The VCT flooring in area A and B classrooms is also near completion, with work continuing in the other areas. The gym slab has been leveled, and we're waiting for the flooring installer to schedule the install. The plumbing work is near completion, some remaining tasks continue. Uh, the mechanical work is ongoing, and the proposal for the new controls package has been accepted, and the work on the controls does continue. So, everything is working okay, except, uh, right now, it's our electrical, uh, contractor who is kinda holding some, holding things up. Any questions on either the escalation claims or, uh, Sanford Pride Elementary?
Electrical contracts, 70 electrical? Oh. Any questions for anybody? Hey Matt, um, is this kinda the, are you hoping this is the last slip? I assume the answer is yes, but you, you don't anticipate another slide in the schedule, do you, or?
Uh, no, I don't think so. We've got some time, as I said. I wasn't expecting us really to be able to start moving in there anyways until the beginning of July. So, I, I still think we're okay, but obviously, um, the electrical contractor does, uh, have, um, they have a, a big part in us being able to get that substantially completed and get us the permits that we need to be able to come in. So, um, my hope is that we can continue to put pressure on them. As I said, uh, all other indications, other signs are very positive.
Can I, can I just ask a question, Matt? I know, um, last year or the year before, there was, um, they ended up, I don't know, it was something with the electrical in the pack. And so they ended up bringing a bunch of the local electricians came together to kinda help finish that up so that they could do performances or whatever. Is that something that you may want to put, like, the, they might wanna subcontract out?
Yeah, I think, uh, I think right now, we've only been looking at that option with the subcontractor, and they, they aren't delivering, and it feels like they're also unwilling in the sense that they may not have the manpower to put towards the, uh, to the additional work. And if that's the case, then I think we do have to push back and start to say, are we able to look at, uh, other options? And, as you know, Amy, as you start to get into this time of year, summer, it's busy. So, um, I think back when we were looking at the Performing Arts Center is a different time of year, but yeah, that's an option that we can push back with, that if they're not gonna deliver, rather than us wait, uh, and be held up by them, we're gonna have to see if we can look for other options. But, I would also say that that probably would be something that, I'm not sure it'd be contentious, but I'm sure it would be a discussion.
And I assume that'll be a, uh, item for the construction committee this week, right Matt?
Yeah, that, well, obviously, our next meeting, we didn't meet last week formally. Uh, that's when they issued this. We have gone back with them to get more information, and we expect to really push the issue this Thursday.
Uh, anything else from anyone? Okay, uh, what do you got for, and solid for construction, right Matt?
That's it, yeah.
Okay, anything for the performing arts, uh, committee, Paula?
Other than, uh, two of the dance performances they had, the shows, and they were amazing, and it was so nice to see people there and see it working, and it's so-
Awesome. Yeah, it was pretty busy. Uh, they did the indoor, uh, winter percussion and winter garden show Saturday, and then the dance thing was right afterwards. It was like, all these people here again, it's nice. Uh, WSSR, I did actually get a nice little updated email from Sarah. Actually, little, I say little, but it's, uh, pretty lengthy. Um, so in the last 28 days for WSSR, the YouTube channel has had over, over 9,800 views, uh, 1,200 hours of watched content, 59 new subscribers. Uh, the live stream, the National Honor Society, the Sanford Elks Banquet from the top 50, uh, York County Community College commencement, uh, the winter percussion and winter garden performances, uh, created video for the SRTC National Technical Honor Society, uh, working on a video for kindergarten screening, Concert of Hope with the, uh, high school chorus, music from the jazz band, uh, middle school May mental health awareness video, adult education promotional videos, and film recitals from Jazz, Tap, and Dance Academy. Upcoming events include, uh, streaming the SRTC recognition night, uh, adult education graduation on June 2nd. Uh, the SRTC recognition is actually this Wednesday, the 26th. Athletic awards on June 4th, senior awards on June 7th, graduation on June 9th, and the Portland Bach Experience on June 12th. And I'm exhausted just reading all that, and Sarah has been doing it. So, once again, as always, kudos to Sarah for pushing a ton of content out there. Um, so that's that. Um, adult there, anything from you, Jonathan, or that?
I got a note from, um, Nicole last week. So, they, they solidified the partnership with planning this driveway school. McCollum is going live Monday, but presumed today, since she wrote it last week. Um, they've been interviewing candidates for the summer welding program. Getting ready for graduation, June 2nd, 7:00 PM. They plan to go. And, uh, registering students for the summer session, which starts July 5th. So, day two, we're busy.
Excellent, good to hear. Okay, so let's move on to superintendent's report. Uh, we'll start with the student representative reports. Uh, Bella, do you have anything for us tonight?
Um, so I don't have a lot, but I do, sorry, that was my sister in the background. Um, there is, uh, the This Is Us event that is coming up Friday, which should be super exciting, we have so many cool things. I think, uh, we've been kind of advertising it. I made a slideshow, these are in the whole page. Announcements, I think it's really great for students to like, get excited about it. Um, and I think it'll be a lot of fun, and I think it'll be a good kind of like, end of year, like, we know this year really sucked, but here's some, have a fun day, and you know, to finish out the school year and be stressed a bit, and I think it just will be really enjoyable for our students, so, yeah.
Awesome, thanks Bella. Uh, Grace, do you have anything for us this evening?
Um, I don't think so. The only thing I can think of is, uh, summer sports is gonna be starting up at the beginning or middle of June. So I know people are starting to get the word out for that, if people are interested in, I think. Um, that was it. Oh, and NHS is having their senior night tomorrow at the SPAC, so. That will be fun to recognize the seniors for the hard year they had to go through, so, yeah.
Excellent, thanks Grace. Okay, so, uh, Mr. Nelson, we're onto you with the, uh, school news update.
Okay, so I will, um... Okay, uh, first off, um, I did in the last report, um, at our last meeting, uh, I talked about how Aslan Warden was a, uh, semifinalist, uh, for the US Presidential Scholar, one of eight people from the state of Maine. And guess what? She is now a Presidential, a US Presidential Scholar. She's one of two from the state of Maine, and she's one of 161 in the United States to be named a United States Presidential Scholar. So, congratulations, uh, to Aslan. Uh, also, wanna recognize, uh, Principal Matt Peterman. Um, in addition to recognizing the accomplishments of our students and local youth, the Elks also presented a well-deserved Outstanding Youth Leadership Award to Mr. Peterman. Um, this evening, that, um, Alex Banquet was done a little bit differently than in what it was done in the past, but it was still, um, a nice ceremony for our students, and also is nice to recognize Mr. Peterman and all of his efforts, uh, this year. At SRTC, the Engineering and, uh, Archit- Architectural, uh, Design Program, uh... Are the only three high school students in the state of Maine to achieve the advanced professional level in engineering 3D computer design. And just so you know what this entails, the exam for this prestigious certification takes seven days. So last year, SRTC's first student earned the certification as a senior. And this year, uh, SRTC wanna send out congratulations to Nicholas Hammond from Massapeseq, and, uh, Dominic, uh, Legage from Sanford, who are next to be certified, uh, with this. And then you can see them right here in their EAD program, there's Dominic, there's Nicholas. Up at the middle school, fifth grade STEM students figure out how tendons in a hand work, and they're doing that by constructing a robot hand from cardboard, straws, string, and then they're able to pick up a tennis ball. Um, pretty neat. Uh, one thing we have outside at the middle school are our new classroom, the stumps. Here you see Mrs. Birch's class using one of the outside classrooms at the stumps. At CJL, um, Mrs. Gillis's class recently worked on a phonics activity called a museum walk of illustrated words. This is from their Lucy Conick-Cockins Units of Study curriculum. And, um, students have been learning new and exciting words, and they are now word, word collectors. They get to, uh, they chose one of their favorite, uh, words, uh, to explain and to illustrate, and then they hung these throughout the school so that other students can learn some of their new words as well. Mrs. Belanger's third graders have been writing hakus. Uh, here's one by Isabella. Talking about snow. And then here's one called "The Park" by Ronnie. Uh, talking about, uh, playing ball on a hot day. At Margaret Chase Smith's school, uh, the countdown to summer has begun, and the students in the kindergarten and first grade, they've been highlighting a letter day to surprise the students. Each morning, they guessed a special surprise before the big reveal happens in the afternoon at 2. And you can check out some of the fun that is incorporated throughout the various content areas. You're now talking about letters. Experiments. H for hat, and H for day, about a physical movement. CS. And then for Willard School, uh, last year, uh, two of the teachers at Willard School, uh, Ms. Bovin and Mr. Fernandez Phelps, they started an after-school homework club for fourth graders. That was, uh, done to provide students with a dependable, safe, and calm environment for those people who attend. And it's an opportunity for people to get the homework done and also get some extra support. It's been voluntary option, but it has grown from probably five kids last year to this year having about 15 or 20, uh, running Mondays and Thursdays in the afternoon. Also providing a, uh, snack. Right now, transportation is family-dependent, and, uh, we do know that the families have been, uh, happy with that, um, for that. Right now, it's always nice to have a place where you can concentrate for the homework and get some extra help along the way, and make sure that they're not having any missing work, uh, with this, and get the extra help if they need to. So, that is, uh, the latest good news update, uh, from the Sanford School Department.
Excellent, as always, Matt. I just wanna highlight, uh, Aslan, uh, Warden, again, being a Presidential Scholar, that's huge. That's a huge accomplishment, so. Congratulations, Senator. How many students did it start out with? I don't remember. Oh, like the country? Country? Yeah, was it several hundred thousand? The finalists, there was like six or seven thousand finalists. Right, but how many did it start with? Oh, I don't know if you have that, I don't, maybe I don't remember for that. I think it's a lot. I'm gonna go with a lot.
Yeah, awesome. Hey, congratulations to Mr. Peterman also on that award, that's awesome too.
I think it was the beard that really got it for, uh, Mr. Peterman. Okay, Matt, let's move on before it breaks down anymore. Uh, return to in-person learning?
Um, sure, wanna be able to, uh, provide an update on that. We continue, uh, to work towards, uh, getting all of our students back in-person learning. We have received some updated guidance, uh, from the governor's office as well, uh, with that. Uh, one thing to point out, um, the governor's allowance for individuals who have been vaccinated to not wear masks indoors, that does not apply to schools. And so for us right now, we continue with all students and staff still wearing masks when inside of our schools. Um, if a student has been fully vaccinated for COVID-19 though, they will not have to quarantine if they are close contact to a positive case. The Maine CDC continues to recommend three feet distancing, uh, between and among students. Um, with that, uh, they are saying that distancing requirements may shift if a school participates in pool testing and achieves 30% participation. I'll be sharing a little bit more information on pool testing in a second. The requirement of six feet distancing when unmasked and eating or drinking continues to apply. Uh, the requirement for adults to maintain six feet of distancing has been removed. The maximum occupancy from staff rooms, um, in, um, staff rooms based on six feet distancing has also been removed. Uh, with that, uh, parents and visitors and external groups are now allowed into our buildings, and the distance relating to music from 14 feet to six feet. Right now, uh, we continue to go with status quo when it comes to masking, um, and physical distancing to the best outside. Uh, right now, we are, uh, we have a couple of weeks left in the school year. I am concerned about, uh, as we wanna have a successful end. I'm so proud of how everyone has done, and we've limited school transmission, but we've got some, uh, important and big events coming up, starting this week, with our SRTC recognition night, and then also as we move towards, um, senior night and graduation and whatnot, we wanna continue, for us right now, uh, to keep the status quo in place. Uh, 'cause as I mentioned, the governor's allowance for that, uh, does not apply to schools.
Okay, Matt cut off, so we're gonna, uh, fill until he can get back in. Push, push. There's always one, there's one in every group.
I was hoping to get clarification when he comes back, just with, um, the SRTC graduation this week as well as regular graduation in a couple of weeks, with a sense of family members, um, are they being asked through masks when they come into the stadium and whatnot?
Yeah, that's probably a great question. And I know we were originally questioning whether we should mask tonight, but with the, uh, state not changing requirements for school, we're continuing to mask, we're all vaccinated, but still playing by the rules. Should we go downstairs and make sure Matt's okay? Did somebody take him out? Everybody hang tight for a few minutes while we wait for Matt? Good to hear. Okay, Matt is apparently having some technical difficulties, so we're gonna jump ahead to the director's reports. Uh, so Steve, we're gonna jump to you. Are y'all ready to take the reins?
No, I am not, because I need to be able to share my screen for my presentation tonight. Beth, do you need a screen for yours? You muted, Beth.
Oh, I do not need the screen, so I can jump ahead first, if that's okay?
Yep, that works.
All right, so tonight, I'm just, um, updating you on the, um, state MEA, or the MEA testing. Um, as I shared in a previous meeting, um, the state moved to NWEA as their math and literacy assessments, and the Numeridian Science Test as the science assessment for grades 5, 8, and the third year of high school. Um, so both the middle school and the high school, both, um, administered the Numeridian Science Test last Monday, the 17th, it was the opening day of it. Couple minor glitches, they were able to work through. Um, and Mr. Peterman said that, I believe, they had 165 juniors show up for the Numeridian Science Test, which we were very, very pleased with. Um, that test can only be done in person, so we had to ask the students to come in that day. Um, and now he's in the process of, of catching the rest of them that didn't show up. And the junior teachers are working on their NWEA testing for math and, um, literacy right now. And then Mr. Peterman will work with some of his staff to pull in the rest of them. At times that, that hopefully won't disrupt too much of their learning. Um, like if a SRTC student has, um, their program in the morning, they'll pull them in the afternoon so that it doesn't, um, upset the learning in that environment. Um, the windows close. In about a week and a half and I, I have my next, um, curriculum, uh, meeting with Amy and Paula. On the first part of June, we'll, and I'll update them on our NWEA scores and where we landed for the year. The Numeridian Science Assessment scores, we won't get until the fall. Um, and that's about all I have. Any questions?
Any questions for Beth? Excellent job as always, Beth.
And I see Steve has now the power over the screen, so.
I was able to make my call, so thank you, Steve.
Okay, awesome. Uh, good evening, guys. Um, tonight I have, um, the dropout prevention, prevention report to share with you this evening. Um, this spring, the dropout prevention committee met twice. We're required to meet, um, by state law and report back to the school committee. Um, I'd like to say thank you to a number of folks who participated. We have Brent Coleman, who is our outreach worker. Liz Dudgeon, the superintendent's executive assistant, Mike Faunce, the attendance coordinator. Deanna Farrell, the SRTC counselor, Tara Hool, who is a jobs remain grad instructor at the middle school. Nicola Ivey from Sanford Community Adult Ed. Beth Lambert, our curriculum director, Beth Flotino, the director of school counseling at Sanford High School. Erin Laura, who is our data specialist here at central office. Joe Mistracchio, the assistant principal at Sanford Middle School, Matt Peterman, principal of Sanford High School. Kathy Sargent, the SRTC director, Karen Webb, the Al Ted director and Amy Sevigny. So I'd just like to say thank you for those folks for their time. Now, as we look at the dropout, what's the purpose of the dropout prevention committee? Really, the purpose for our committee is to review data, look for the current year and longitudinal trends. Report back to you and to make some recommendations. So why is dropout prevention important? Um, we look at a couple of things. The first thing is the economic and social well-being of our students. Dropouts, um, have. A decreased access to high-paying jobs, which decreases their earning potential, which has impacts for them as they go through life. Also, in terms of healthcare, they have limited access to healthcare. And then the impact on the economy. Our economy is based on the need for highly skilled workers. And with dropouts, um, that ability to learn and the ability to, for our employers to have highly skilled employees decreases. So. As we look at dropouts, the first thing we talk about is risk factors. And when we looked at our data, we looked at the individual students and each student told a story. No two stories are the same. Um, being an elementary principal and working with some of these kiddos from when they were in kindergarten. And some of them, knowing them when they were. One or two or three, that's how old they are now. Um, they all have a different story, but there were some common things that research will say. And the first thing is that individual background and characteristics. Students that have a learning disability. Or have ADHD or emotional disturbance, these students are more likely to drop out of school. Not that they're going to, it's just that they have an increased risk. We look at it early adult responsibilities. Those students that are working an extraordinary amount of hours. Those students that have had children themselves and are now parenting. And these two bottom ones are two that people on the committee really felt were having an impact in our community. Students that were parenting their parents or students that were parenting their own siblings. And then those students who age out of foster care. If we look at those social attitudes or value and behavior. Those high-risk peer groups. Those students that are engaging in high-risk social behavior, highly social outside of school. And then their family attitudes towards education. We looked at school performance. School performance, there are some things that are big indicators. Um, early on in a child's career, school career and dropout. First one is retention. We know that students that are retained are more likely to drop out of school. We also know that students that have poor literacy and poor literacy skills are also more likely to drop out of school. We talk about getting all kids reading on grade level by the age, by grade three. By the end of grade three, getting all students reading at grade level. If we look at student engagement. For attendance, low educational expectations, lack of effort, low commitment to school. They're not participating in those extracurricular activities. Um, they move a lot or they experience frequent homelessness. We also look at those school behaviors. Students, we, that have frequent misbehaviors, early aggression. Or they find that, find themselves involved in those juvenile, um, justice systems. So these are the original, the individual risk factors, um, of students that drop out. There's a little bit of delay in mine. If we look at Sanford, our historical dropout data. We look over the past eleven years. And we look at. The percentage back in two thousand nine, two thousand ten. We had about twelve hundred students at the high school. And our dropout percentage was four point six four percent. We jumped down to nineteen twenty. You notice our school population is twelve ninety-eight. With a dropout percentage of two point three nine. Now that is a little bit deceiving. Because if you remember, last year, we had our eighth graders at the high school. And those eighth graders are lumped into that twelve ninety-eight. And as you can see, in general, our dropout data, the dropout rate is decreasing. You look at this graph here, we look at graduation rates and we talk more about graduation rates than we do about dropout rates. If you look at this graph here, it starts in sixteen seventeen. If you look at the top left. In sixteen seventeen, we had two hundred and fifty-five students begin with us. And two hundred and twenty-three out of those two hundred and fifty-five students graduated in four years. Eight students graduated within three years, which gave it, gave us a graduation rate of eighty-seven point one. Seven percent. And then if you extended those five-year graduates, eighty-seven point eight two. Now. This chart represents some area high schools. Some towns that have similar demographics as ours and then others that are, um, I would, I would consider not really similar to us. But if you look at Sanford the past two years. Our graduation rate has hovered right around eighty-seven percent. You can see other communities around us. Massa Besic was at eighty-nine point four two. If you look at Bonnie Eagle, they were at eighty-one point three six. You look at up north, you head north a little bit. You look at Edward Little in Auburn had about eighty percent. Lewis and High School had seventy-three percent. You can see, you can look at a community's, uh, demographics. And sort of predict what their graduation rate will be. As we look at, we talked about one of those risk factors. We also look at what are some prevention strategies? What are some things that we can do? That research tells us has a high impact in keeping kids in school. Look at early intervention. When we talk about early intervention, we talk about pre-K. Early childhood education, engaging with families, early literacy development. Those are all things important to give kiddos a solid start. We look at foundational strategies. We talk about systematic approaches. Systematic approaches, that means. Do we have clear goals? Are we focusing on continuous improvement? Are we collaborating with the community and are we creating safe learning environments in our schools? We look at core strategies. Mentoring, tutoring, tutoring, service learning, alternative school, and then after-school and out-of-school opportunities. And then managing improving instruction, professional development. We've provided professional development for our educators. I think, um, as a school department, we should be extremely proud of the professional development we provide for our teachers. Active learning. Are we engaging kids in learning? Do we have technology? Do we have educational technology and individualized instruction? And another area we should be very proud about is our career and technical education. So these are all strategies that research will tell us will have a high impact. As we look in Sanford, what we have, we look at a support system that we currently have in place. The first thing that we want to do is we want to monitor. We want to monitor students. We have systems in place, eight through twelve. Where we are constantly looking at students and how they're doing. Now. At some levels, it's stronger than others. But in general, we have systems in place. We have multi-tiered systems of support. That's looking at students. Looking at academics, their social, emotional well-being. Do they have what they need? We have attendance teams in all of our buildings that monitor attendance. When students start to slip, we reach out. We look at our student assistance teams that meet, make referrals. And that, that team looks at providing the social, emotional resources, whether it be counseling or other strategies for students. We look at Title One coordination, really looking at early learning for literacy and math. And then at the high school level, they're constantly monitoring credits, monitoring grades to make sure kids are on track for graduation. So monitoring. The second piece is support. Do we provide support to those students, um, that are falling behind? We have Title One, which is a federally funded program that works for elementary students that were moving into the middle school. We have social work services, individual counseling. We have that first-time offender plan for students that have a first-time drug offense or a behavior offense. We put plans in place to help support this kiddo. We have crisis response. We have outreach and the list could go on. Those are just a few that the committee, um, identified. And all these, by the way, these are all the, 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 um, strategies that the committee identified. So monitor, support and engage. How do we engage our kids? We have SRTC, job for main grads. We have ELOs. We have after-school activities. We have clubs during the day. We have athletics, music. We have focus on SEO. We focus on those positive relationships. And then we also have some separate community adult education. It helps some of our students get to the alternative pathway and get their high school diploma. And then finally, are we personalizing, um. Support for kids. And so we have one of those programs that we provide that intensive support. We have small group instruction. We have alternative ed. We have our bridge program. Five oh four, special education services. We have the SEAL team at the middle school. We have an online component of Odyssey where we've rolled out edge annuity this class year to provide, um. Parental support to individual, small counseling groups. And the list, we can go on and on, but there are a lot of great things happening in our community and in our school system to provide support to all students. So the committee met, the first time, the first meeting we met, we really looked at the data. We started talking about what were those some things we had in place. In our final meeting, we came back together and we said, what are those things that we, looking at the research, one of those things we'd recommend? To try to help keep kids in school and help to keep them across that finish line. And you'll notice it's, this is not a Sanford High School, um, problem or a Sanford High School issue. This is a K twelve, PK to twelve systematic effort. And so some of the things that they identified, the left-hand column are things currently in the works. Increasing the number of elementary school counselors. That's part of our S R funding. We look at providing general education to social workers, K eight. Currently, we do not have many. We're looking at use S R funds to hire one for the middle school and one for the elementary school. Support and transition programs in, in all of our schools. We know at the middle school and the high school and over at school, they have support and transition rooms that keep kids in school. When they have behavior infractions or when they need support rather than sending them home. So we want to incorporate that over to MCS and Carl Lamb, that programs to keep kids in school. Look at restorative practices. Restorative practices, community building circles, morning meetings, those things that are really meant to, uh, connect kids to school and engage them. Here's a big one. Providing after-school academic support. And providing after-school transportation. Staff feels strongly that we need to provide equitable service to those kiddos that cannot provide transportation themselves to after-school programming. And they feel strongly, we need to provide a better system of academic support through mentoring and tutoring. And so we're looking to use our federal funds to do that. And then expanding pre-K. That is, that is a must. Um, the research will tell us that, that is a must and something that we're going to be planning on, planning for heavily, um, next year as we move forward. The right-hand column. These are things that are not currently, um, in the works, but they're also in areas that they would recommend. Strengthening transitions to grades four and five and then grades eight to nine. We are so fortunate in Sanford that students are going to be able to enter our system. And go through an elementary school, a middle school, a high school. They're only going to have to have two transitions. So we really need to work to make those, sure those transitions are small. Beth Flotino, Beth Lambert talked a lot about co-op at the high school. We need to bring co-op back. Increase JMG. Then finally, increase parent support and training. Really removing those barriers that parents face into, in, in terms of getting their child to school every day. Um, so those are the recommendations the committee had for you. Um, and at this time, I will take any questions you may have.
Anybody with questions?
One of the last things you mentioned, Steve, just coming on to the JMG graduation in high school last week, um. It just seems so natural what they do for students. It, it ought to be a much larger piece of the curriculum. That, it reminded me of junior achievement programs. Again, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty high on, on personal finance. I just don't think we teach nothing from pre-K through twelve. I don't know how to, I don't know the problem like Chris Hart. I have to keep the basics back into, uh, into education. So I'm gonna get off the rails here on my question. I'd like to see some of the increases. I'd like to see the co-op being brought back. There are so many things need to be done. Just getting back to the basics and I hope, hope we keep pushing that those types of lines. So thank you, Steve.
That's a last, Steve.
Amy's on.
I'm on. So, you know, I was part of, um, that committee, which was, it's a great committee, um, and thank you for inviting me to join. Um, a, one, a couple of things came to my mind as you were talking and about. So. When, and I see, when there are kids that have kind of been, um. I don't even know how to word it, that, that you were, or have concerns that in the elementary level, kindergarten, first, second, third grade. That, you know, they have some of the early, um. I'm forgetting if your slide was back up, I can look at it. Um. Some of the.
Children's side.
Risks, some risks. Um, there it is, sorry. If they had some risks that were, you know, realized earlier on in the elementary level. And, you know, if they have behaviors or they have some specific learning needs. Is that put into IC moving forward? So let's just say their first grade teacher ends up leaving through the summer. And then now they have a brand new second grade teacher. Is there communication, almost like a progress note that is put in there? Um, that's a little bit more than, than a, in a report card that kind of helps with these strategies helped? Whether they're behavioral or learning or, or not?
Yeah, what, um, tangent question, Amy, especially at the elementary level. There's a high level of data that travels with a student from year to year. That you, that data is, uh, concrete, but there's also that anecdotal data that it, that travels from teacher to teacher. Um, and from building to building and for, I would say from school department to school department. When we talk about response to intervention. Um, a lot of students that have difficulty will have a formal response to intervention plan. a lot of students that have difficulty will have a formal response to intervention plan that will travel with them. So the receiving teacher knows, this is what this student needs to work on. This is how it was being addressed. And then following up on those students every six to eight weeks to make sure that they're making progress. That, that's how the system is designed. That's how it's supposed to work. I would think there's good communication going on at the elementary level in particular. And Amy, I think what's really exciting, what's really, really exciting, having been in Sanford for so many, a long time now, is that ability to have a kid and follow a student from K to four. That is going to be crucial for our kids. I cannot stress that enough in terms of knowing, really for teachers and staff getting to know their kids without having to start over. I mean, for that continuity, I think it's just very important.
And you mentioned, and I know, I feel like I'm kind of like repeating myself also at these meetings. When I heard you say that you're looking to get A one social worker for all three elementary schools to share, I am very concerned about that. I'm also concerned about having one kindergarten or school counselor to be shared amongst three schools. Just in my profession, on holidays and weekends, when we have one or two social workers that live in the emergency room and we need them, it can take, firstly, we have to make the call. It can take an hour and a half, if not longer to come. And I just feel like with these funds and knowing what you just reported and other, you know, people that have come and spoke to us in the past, that it is, I, I feel like this is money well spent. And I'm having a hard time understanding why we're going to be trying to share one social worker for three schools. I personally feel like each elementary level with these funds as a free year or trial for one year. Two, every elementary school has two school counselors and then a social worker just so that we can continue to kind of monitor the kids. And if it is for one year, it's for one year. But I'm having a hard time understanding why we're, we're contemplating sharing one, about one body for three schools. I, I can't get past it.
I'll say this, I said a couple of weeks ago, I trust what they're presenting out there. I think we've brought it up as a concern. If the money is there to do more, then I'd be behind what you're saying. But if, you know, Steve, Matt, that whole team feels that money's better spent somewhere else, then, you know, they're the professionals. So that's
I understand, but this is part of us having a conversation.
Yeah, exactly.
So I do have to say that I met with the Willard Advisory Committee this past week and we were discussing with the counselors all the, basically what they're hit with every single day and the experiences that they are expecting coming next year. And it seemed impossible to me. And I understand there are funding issues and it's not that we don't trust that, you know, Nina's doing a good job figuring this out, but it just seemed an impossible job from the perspective of even me as a mom, having my eight-year-old who has had an absolute horrible time this year, dealing with just his anxiety and his issues. I can't imagine having, you know, an entire school to myself, let alone three schools. And it just seems impossible. And I'm wondering also, why, why are we just doing one at a time when we have these funds? And I think that's an okay question to ask. I'm not saying that we don't trust what's being decided.
Right.
It's just, it's just
Yeah, can I, can I, can I back up for a minute? When we look at social work services at the elementary level, now even at the middle school level, high school's a little bit different. But at the elementary schools, we have three different types. Next year, we'll have three different types of social workers. So the first one would be special education. For students that are identified as needing special education, social work. Each building will have their own special education, social worker. Then we look at Sweetser. Sweetser is outpatient social work services. That is for students that have main care or for students that have other insurance avenues to explore. Our buildings either have two of those or one, depending on the building. And then the, the regular ed social work position is a position for, for those students that are sort of in that donut hole or just fall through that crack. For those students that, they don't have special education services, they don't have access to health insurance. So that's what this position is designed to do. As we look, we're also going to have problems finding staff to fill those potentially. But what we're, our next step, Holly and Amy, is to reach out to our local universities. As we have in the past, we have also had interns that have come in that have been supervised by our staff, but have also provided great service to our kids. So it's, it's not just one social worker. There, there's, there's a team of people and it depends on where that, where that need is. With you, but I hear, I hear what you're saying also in terms of maybe needing to look to add more support. But I just want to put that context, because I don't want you walking away thinking we only have one social worker in our building. So. Do we have any other questions?
I, I actually had another question regarding, and I asked this at the meeting too. How we work on the continuity between school or as, you know, SEL curriculum or making sure that the kids are receiving equitable services from one school to another and that each school is following and is completely knows everything that is going on with each kid, with each student.
So essentially, how do you not let them fall through the cracks during that transition?
Yeah. The next. And if there's communication between, you know, the counselors and the social workers, is there a time when, you know, once or twice a year when they all meet, that come together? I know Beth is the director for high school, but do, does the middle school have a director for social workers and counselors? Do the elementary school, do they all have goals and see how the water is in every school meeting?
Steve, it seems like it's been several years now, the whole concept on early release days was for collaboration, especially at the grammar schools. I'm curious if that's, I remember this exact discussion based on Paul's question. A student, a student going to next grade, teacher's supposed to share, always a little Johnny, right? But what is his, what are his or her strengths and weaknesses? And so the next teacher can grab that child and continue with it.
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve or Matt, but I think when that previous discussion, it also came up Beth Luterno here also has a position as like a district wide coordinator for this type of, correct? I think Yeah, so to back up a minute, our counselors meet once a month as a district, as a K twelve team. Beth Luterno at the Director of Guidance at the high school. This year, she's picked up sort of grade level leader for our K through eight folks. And so she meets with them. That has been newly instituted this week as an attempt to try to have some continuity and some consistency, K twelve and how we approach school guidance. Thanks, Steve.
Well, I think, yeah, I think that's a good point for us to kind of go back and look at amongst that communication through the early release days that can be done internally with the school. I think you saw Steve talk about really highlighting when it changes schools. But I think we better not just assume that it is happening within the school, internally within schools from grade to grade. We want to make sure that we are building in that time to be able to assess with that. Because I think what Steve has talked about, that has really helped us. But I think we'd want to make sure that it is, we're building in time for those transitions, not only just from a, a different school to a different school, but within a school to the grade to make sure that we've got those communications. And then when we do have people that are transitioning schools, I think we want to make sure that that time is built in there so that they, the appropriate people are going through the schools to really talk about kids and what works so we can set them up for success rather than having us kind of, when there are some challenges, spend a lot of time figuring out problems when we've already had a lot of information there. So I think that's some good dialogue and some good points tonight that we can make sure that we're working on to help our kids transition and move.
Thanks, Beth. Jonathan?
Yeah, coupled with early release days is also, remember the whole idea of all the money spent in our schools, there'll be three K through fours. The idea where students would not be jumping from two and K, not going Chase Smith, going one, two here, three, four there. The idea is to keep a child mostly in three schools through their whole career, you know what I'm saying? So there's less school jumping, I hope. But that's, that was the plan.
Can I ask, is it, a couple of years ago, I was on an SEL committee as a parent and Bernie was on it, Megan Walsh was on it, and some of the social workers, some of the school counselors on it. And it was a very excellent collaboration amongst all of the schools, but also had stakeholders. And I, and I, I feel that this would be a committee that I think should maybe come back to life. Not necessarily sure who would lead it, but I do feel, given the situation that we're all in with COVID and the kids and where the kids are at mentally, that I think it would be, I know that we've got, you know, the Wednesdays, but I also think bringing in some parents as well. I do think that it would be an important thing to revisit.
That's been a good point. Like even as we go into next year, we're going to have the plans for getting back in-person learning. There really should kind of be some plans for like a, like a check-in, like along the way, you know, how is this working out? Check and adjust, check and adjust. And parental feedback is definitely key to that. So. Yeah, anything else on dropout reporting for anybody? We kind of got a little side off there, but. Steve, we also have you down for summer meals and meals for twenty one, twenty two. Okay, uh, summer meals. So this summer, Holly and Eric will be providing summer meals at Carl Lamb School, Curtis Lake MCS, Memorial Gym, Nassau Community Center, Springvale Park, and the YMCA. Those will be closed sites, meaning Holly is providing for specific kiddos in those locations. The open sites in our community this summer will be at Carpenter Park and at Sanford High School. Those will be to the open sites where community members can go and pick up lunch and breakfast Monday through Friday. Keep in mind, our summer meals are open, birth to eighteen, any school age kid in prior birth to five. So keep that in mind. Now, moving into next fall, and we have some exciting news, and that is we will be operating under the school lunch program, but breakfast and lunch will once again be free for students. However, it'll be very important that we have parents fill out that income validation form at the beginning of the year. Because as we know, that number determines a lot of the funding we get from the federal government here in Sanford. So good news on the summer meals front and for the meals for next year. Did anybody have any questions? I'll take them.
What does that do? Like I remember last year hearing about, like, because of COVID, everything, the papers and all, it get handed in and this and that. And there was like a due date for you to get all those papers in. I'm just asking for like the PTAs and, you know, many different ways to get that out there so that we get as many forms in at this, you know, by the deadline.
I don't know the exact date, but usually we try to send those home the first day, or even sometimes we send them home before. And we ask them to come back within a week. So it's right there at the beginning of the school year, trying to get those forms back. That's, that's really what we'd like to see. Hey, Steve, is there like an electronic version of that form or is it all just paid for a hard copy that has to go out back? You're picking my, I don't want to say because I don't know for a hundred percent. It just seems like it's, it's going to be difficult this year to get people to fill them out if they're going to get the lunch for free anyways. You don't really have that incentive to make sure they get them in, but then if our federal money numbers are based off of those forms, it becomes pretty crucial to get those forms in. And the easier you can make it, the better. So.
I think it's also us educating them, really like trying to push it, asking the staff when they send out their blooms or, you know, the pushouts that we're educating everybody why it's so complicated.
Yeah, exactly.
Because, you know, it's just a piece of paper, you know, on top of the other ones you've got to fill out. So you're right, like people don't necessarily do that.
I've always thought it was a good opportunity to try to digitize as many of those forms as you could, especially the ones that you fill out every year as a parent. And it's like, hey, I filled out this exact same form last year. But that's another topic. So. Anything else on summer meals or the meals for next year for Steve? No? Yeah, thanks, Steve. Good work. Let's jump back up to Mr. Nelson since we have him back on board. I'm not sure how far you kept going, Matt, when you dropped off. We thought maybe you got through your whole presentation.
Oh, I, I think I picked up on pretty quick. Steve, can you get us out of the screen share here? Thank you. Okay. So no, I was just giving updated guidance on the, from the M D O E for that. I did want to talk a little about pool testing, just to give people a heads up on that. We're planning to have more information in front of the school committee at one of our upcoming June meetings. But I wanted to at least make the public and the school committee aware. DHS and M D O E have implemented a pooled PCR testing program. And that's for any K through twelve school administrative unit, public or private, that's starting this month. And it's going to go through next school year. And pooled PCR testing is a more efficient way to test large groups of students and staff in schools on a weekly basis. What that entails is collecting swabs from a small group of students that usually is a, a class or a homeroom. You place those swabs in a common test tube, mixing several test samples together in, in a batch or a pool. And then the testing and pooled sample with the PTR test is sent away for testing to see if it does test for COVID. If their pool's results are positive, the individuals in that pool will then need to be tested using our Binax Now testing, a rapid test. And that way, the positive individual would then be sent home into their isolation period. There are several advantages of using the pool testing, but probably the two biggest are if a school can get thirty percent of the student population to participate, then the DOE is going to eliminate physical distinct requirements for students. Although students would still have to wear masks while indoors and they'd still need to remain six feet apart when eating. And then also, if a school gets thirty percent of the student population to participate, individuals who may be in a pool with a positive result, but who test negative and remain asymptomatic after the Binax Now test, they would not have to quarantine as a close contact to the positive case. So we're looking at that. There are some disadvantages. It's going to require, you know, there's going to be a capacity issue. We're probably going to need some more staffing and be able to coordinate that testing to be able to do that consistently for that. And that's something we're going to have to look for. And then obviously, there's some confidentiality issues too that you might have to work through in that it might be easily, easy to identify the person with the positive test. But these are things we're starting to look at in, in greater detail. I know when we talk about spacing at our schools, at Sanford Middle School, we're planning to bring all of our students back and do that on campus. And so anything that we can do to reduce some of the spacing challenges that we have is something that we want to look at, that see if it's in our best interest. And so this is kind of a sneak preview. We're planning on doing more, sharing more information on pooling, a pool testing at an upcoming meeting in June. But those are some of the things that we look at as we're trying to get our kids back in person five days a week. Next year, we're looking at doing that. Our hiring continues to move along in terms of, we've got a number of people that will be nominated at tonight's meeting. I also anticipate another large number at next, our next school committee meeting on June seventh. We did identify some of the things we're looking at for social emotional learning in terms of looking at increasing social work and school counselors. Based on the earlier conversation tonight, we're gonna want to take another more in-depth look at that to see if we've got the ability to also be able to add more resources in that area. What's hard here is, as we try to go back with the in-person learning and the funding we have, we're kind of, it's a very fluid situation as we move along. Remember with those funds, they're not funds, the ESSR funds are not funds that are gonna have to be spent by June thirtieth of two thousand twenty one or June thirtieth of two thousand twenty two. We have a three-year period to be able to look at that. And so we're doing our best to move along and strategically try to look at those things, starting with our classrooms, and then expanding out in terms of how we can provide resources to better meet our kids' needs as they are returning from the pandemic and increasing in-person learning. So that's my, that's my in-person learning update with that. I do have Matt Peterman and Kathy Sargent on the, at the meeting today, because we do have some big events coming up. We do have the SRTC award ceremony scheduled for this Wednesday, and then senior activities behind that coming up. So I wanted to have an opportunity for Kathy and Matt to kind of give people, to give the school committee an update on plans moving forward around this updated guidance. So Kathy, ladies first, your event's up on Wednesday, so why don't you go ahead and let people know what you're planning?
I don't mind going second. We're watching the weather really carefully for this Wednesday and hoping that it goes well. So that's, that's my first announcement, I guess. We, looking at the governor's guidance a little more in-depth and, and how things have been going, we would like to make a couple of small changes for our event coming up this Wednesday. And the first is, we were going to limit students to two tickets for guests, and we would like to open that up to four tickets for guests. I really feel like we can distance adequately with that, especially with, we're remaining with two events, which gives us the opportunity to split the two hundred and sixty-something students into two groups, and then to be able to have more family members there. Hopefully, we'll give students more of an opportunity to celebrate this evening, because we do certainly have, you know, students who bring two guests or fewer even, but certainly others bring the whole family. So we, we would like to give them more of that opportunity if we can. One of the things we'll be doing is opening up the visitor's side bleachers for greater distancing so that our stage, so to speak, will be oriented in such a way that you can view the event from both sides. So I think that will give people a better opportunity to kind of see from everywhere on the field, and then again, distance more. And the other thing that I wanted to propose for guests at our event, originally, we had talked about asking people to be masked as a guest at the event, and we would like to at least entertain the possibility of not doing that, really in reference to the most recent changes in those requirements by the governor. We would like students to remain masked. We really want to do everything that we can to, obviously, we want to keep everyone safe, but with students' graduations coming up, I think we're, we're really going, it's an abundance of caution for students to be sure that they are able to make it to their graduation ceremonies. That's very important for me, and I would not want anything to, to cause that not to happen for these students. This is an important time of year for them. So that's what we're looking at for our event, and we're getting excited for it. Looking forward to it.
Just to recap, right now, it'll be a ticketed event. If people want to sit in the, in the bleachers, we're looking at both sides. If you're really looking to really honor more of the distancing, that's gonna be on the visitor sidelines. If you're, the home side will be more of, on the bleachers, where those distancing requirements will not be in place. If there are people that want to come, that don't have a ticket, they still can. They'll just be outside the area. They won't be able to go up into the, into the grandstand in terms of where the, the bleachers are for that. And as Kathy said, it is an abundance of caution for us as we're able to maintain with all the students will be down on the field. They will be six feet apart. It looks like the people will be coming up when they're being recognized in their individual program for that. Most of other recognition will require the students to stand, right Kathy?
Correct.
For that, so that with all the sending schools that we have, one of the things that we want to do is honor our SRTC students for all of their accomplishments, but we really want to do that in a safe way, and we also want to do our best to try to open that up as well to other family members to be able to expand that to the best that we can.
One other safe opportunity, we will be posting tomorrow the links for the live stream for the events, for both events. So both of those will be up on the WSSR TV YouTube site, as well as they will be taped events as soon as the actual event ends. So lots of opportunities to see this.
I guess, thank you Kathy. I'll open that up to any thoughts or questions from the school committee.
Anything for anybody? I, I would just say, I think Kathy, I think you're probably going in the right direction as far as not requiring masks. It is outdoors. We have ample opportunity for people that are concerned about being compromised to view it. I just think the enforcement of masks would probably make it a less than ideal situation, so. Good work Kathy, as always.
Just a clarifying question. So I, I feel like, were you asking us, or when you were saying that you're going back, what I heard was you're going back and forth whether the students are wearing a mask or not?
No, not at all. No, we asked you. Nah, did you want to address that? I'm sorry.
Well, we're, right now, our plan is to have our students continue to wear masks while they are down on the field.
So my question is, because this actually got brought up recently, and a parent brought, sent an email to the school committee regarding, it was baseball and regarding masks, and they were not wearing masks, anyway. So if, if a student were to be, let's just say, we find out on the day after that one of the SRTC students had COVID, whether they had a mask or not, they're still considered a close contact, correct? Because if outside, it doesn't seem, it still seems that they would still need to quarantine. Am I wrong, or am I right on that?
Uh, I'm not sure, Amy, in terms of, because what you've got is the athletic guidance through athletic activities is sometimes not consistent with what the school activities are. And so here's a school activity for us. What we plan to do is to maintain the six-feet distance, to maintain the masking, and to also have assigned seating. And so it's our hope that we'll be able to kind of be able to use that to work through so that if there is any, and continue to encourage people for symptom checks, that it is our hope by being able to hold that event where we did and the controls that we did on there, that that would allow us to very limit what it would be to, in regards to any quarantining or any contact tracing that would have to take place.
That interview for Amy, I see you're still kind of looking, so.
I mean, I guess it's, I, I'm just playing devil's advocate just for the parents that are out there that are watching, or, you know, that question this as well. So I hear you're saying it's a school event, it's not an athletic event. So like if the lacrosse team or the track team was on the same field earlier doing practice, they don't have to wear masks, but during this event, they do. But the quarantine would really be the same, but the difference is because one is athletic and one is a school.
Well, I think right now, Amy, if you had a positive test, does that take down every student who's on there, regardless of where they were sitting? I think in terms of, if you're looking at a lacrosse practice or a lacrosse game where people are pretty fluid, fluid and moving around, for example, and, and we can debate that, I'm not, I, I, I mean, at the end of the day, I, I see it from both sides. My standpoint would be us trying to take what would be an event that could be inside in the Performing Arts Center, move it outside, allow more people to come and attend, and for us to control it with the idea of saying, we have assigned seating, we have spacing, and we do have the face coverings, so that in the event that someone does come back positive, we're not taking down a whole entire group that was having this, having this award ceremony.
The assigned seating will be what will be the helpful and is the key that everybody hears. It's the assigned seating that is gonna be helpful for not having everybody quarantined there.
Correct, yep.
Okay, anything else? Okay, so just cross your fingers that the weather holds out for Kathy on Wednesday night. So we transition over to Matt now?
Sure, if, thanks Dawn, and we will be doing our, our weather dances to be able to help with that on Wednesday. So yeah, I wanted to also give Matt Peterman an opportunity, Principal Peterman, to also give an opportunity about what we're looking at in terms of the upcoming events at the high school.
So the one way in which I'm much luckier than Kathy is I am only dealing with essentially two communities, which is Sanford and Acton. She's dealing with multiple communities. So you can see how this ceremony coming up on Wednesday could really get fun. We initially had put out that we were gonna give each of the students four tickets for family members, and that was with masking and providing distance in the bleachers. As the guidance has changed, what we've now looked at is doing something similar to what Kathy was talking about. We're gonna rotate our stage and put it in the end zone like we traditionally would at, at Cobb Stadium, and it'll be down on the scoreboard end. And then what we will do is open up both sides of the bleachers. We'll have physical-distanced pods over on the, the visiting side for those who need the additional spacing. And then on the, on the home side, we're looking at those who want to sit there. They, they can sit there, and we will look to get rid of the mask requirement. We will ask that those who are not vaccinated still continue to wear masks, but obviously, no way to enforce that. And then, and then we're looking at upping the number of tickets to six, and the tickets will allow you seats in the bleachers. And then beyond that, if other family members and friends want to come, there's plenty of space that would be along the fence, and it'd be essentially considered standing room. Again, with ours being at the very end of the school year, and with just our senior cohort, we're looking at maintaining the distancing on the field, but once the students are out on the field, we will allow them to remove their masks for the ceremony to include crossing the stage. Everything else is still as planned. We are gonna do a bang-up job during the days prior to maintain the distancing in all of our ceremonies, award ceremony and the banquet, senior banquet, just because we do not want COVID to cause anybody to miss their graduation ceremony.
Hey Matt, quick question.
Yep.
Will there be heating on the field itself for parents?
Ah, good point. No, and there's a reason for that. According to the guidelines, we have to do contact tracing for our students and staff. Those students and staff are gonna be on the field, and we want to keep separation between them and everybody else. If something were to happen, you know, somebody tests positive in the, in the grandstands, all we have to do is notify those not knows, those who attended, but put out a notice that somebody who was in the audience tested positive, and we do not have to contact trace. Plus, at the end of the ceremony, when the seniors are done, they're gonna move into the middle of the field, and they have a surprise for all the attendees. They are going to do their homecoming dance, which they did not get to do during the pep rally in the center of the field, so we need the real estate.
That's cool. Any other questions for Matt? Oh, thanks Matt, thanks for the update. I'm sure some people at home were kind of wondering, so.
Can I just ask Matt Nelson, just one, a couple of things about that pool testing? I think it's really interesting, actually. And I read a little bit about it online, just because I thought it was, it sounds amazing. I'm sure it would be a, was just a little nightmare. How often, I couldn't find that, like how often would those pool tests be needing to happen? Once a week, every other week? Do, do you know?
We'd be looking at, we still have to flush that out, but our understanding is it'd be a weekly test, Amy. We would try to get into a routine where the swabbing is done on Monday, so that if it's done on Monday, you get about forty-eight hours for it to get back from the lab. You get those results on Wednesday. In the situation where it's a positive, you then want to be able to do the Binax Now testing. And so that's when you'd want to start that on a Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday type of thing, so that allows you to do your contact tracing. So that's kind of what we're looking at, is a weekly routine, start on Monday, send it out, get it back, and then be able to, if we're gonna be able to do this. So it, it does look interesting, but as you mentioned, Amy, there's probably a lot of details and a lot of logistics there that do have to, for us to be able to get it worked out for us to be able to do it. But we'd be looking at it weekly, starting at the beginning of the week, just so that it flows, not into the weekend.
It would, it sounds like it would need to almost hire somebody just as that's their job.
Yeah, I understand that.
And then I wanted to just thank you again for the vaccine clinic at the middle school and the high school. Two of my kids got their first vaccine, and so thank you for making that happen, because I think it's worked, it's great. When they get their second vaccine, I don't know, I don't mind sending an email, but I would love for them to have, and I don't even mind making it, the sign that says, I got my vaccine, like one of those, just so they can take a little picture with it. I think it would be cute. And with all their TikToks and Instagrams and this and that, it would be nice to have that opportunity for that.
Pretty exciting.
I could talk to Maine Health, it's probably on that.
Any, any messaging we can get out to help with that is absolutely, I think we would be on board with, and that would, that would be a way to, people can act with in terms of those different options for that, so, yeah. Interesting idea for us to capitalize on that, is we can be able to continue to, obviously, it's personal choice, but encourage people with their vaccination to get vaccinations.
Yeah, Matt, the only other thing we had on the agenda for you for an update was on hiring, so what do we have for that?
No, I, I think right now, you know, we're continuing to move along with our hiring. I want to give kudos to our hiring teams at the various schools or administrators. They've worked very hard. We have a number of people that will be nominated this evening. We're gonna have another number coming on the next meeting on June seventh. I interviewed seven finalists today, and right now, we've locked up six people that have been offered the position that they've accepted pending the final nomination by the school committee. So there's a lot of work that's being done in this. We're doing hiring for not only our replacement positions for those people who've retired or moved on, but also for those ESSR funds and, and looking at that. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that update. We did present something in terms of the social emotional learning in some of the school counseling as we were starting to kind of wait to see how different things flushed out with that. But we'll continue to look at that more in depth based on comments tonight in terms of, and thoughts from the school committee as we can try to look at it. It's, it's challenging in that the good news is Sanford did receive a lot of these federal funds. And so for us, we want to just make sure that we're using those in a way to meet needs, help our students, and also get the best impact that we can, recognizing also that the, it's a three-year time period for us to be able to kind of look at these. So it's been a lot of work. It's been taking, it's been very time consuming, but I think it's time well spent. I get incredibly energized when I see the type of people that are wanting to come to Sanford. We also have some of our people who have left, who were with Sanford, who have left, who are now interested in returning. And I think that speaks to a lot of the hard work and a lot of the things that are going on in our district, a lot of the positive energy that we have. It has been challenging, no doubt about that, but I'm so proud of our students, so proud of our staff and our teachers and our families for being able to try to navigate this. And we can really use this funding to really, really help, help move us forward even further.
Excellent. Thanks, Matt. Okay, let's move on. We already did the director's reports. We'll move on to new business. It looks like Juliana has not been able to join us.
I did, yeah, I did get an email, Don, that she did reach out. She wasn't able to get free tonight for that. So she did kind of reach out. I think she was trying to be able to make it work. Our, our hope is that we might be able, I don't think we're going to be able to recognize her at the June 7th meeting because that matches up with the senior activity. But we might be able to also see if we can have her come on June 21st so that we can honor her and pay her respects for all of her efforts and contributions as a student representative to the school.
Okay, well, that case then. I was just going to say some nice stuff about her now and she can watch it later, but it would be better to have her.
You, you can do that if you choose as well. That's, that's definitely your thought with that.
It will miss for a future meeting. I'll make a motion to table it. Do I have a second? Second for Mr. Rue. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? It's officially tabled. Then we can hopefully have her here.
Yeah, because I think those of you on the school committee, I remember one year we did, when we recognized one of our seniors, Emma. Emma came and attended the meeting after she left. And what was good about that, in addition to her having an opportunity to speak about her experience, she also was able to come back and also speak about the senior activities and everything that went through with that. So I think that's something we can try to shoot for, to be able to see if we can get Juliana to come to June 21st meeting.
Sounds like a plan. Okay, so the next item we have is summer nominations. So essentially, you guys have gone through this, but like Paula and Amy, since we don't meet in July, Matt still needs to get people hired. We would normally be making a motion to do that, so we make a motion now to give Matt some unilateral power to offer teaching contracts for the summer. It tends to go to the head a little bit, but it keeps us somewhat under control.
Don, what I, what I want to add is you'll notice on the motion, it does say June, July and August. That is June only after the last school committee meeting. Right now, the one that's scheduled is June 21st. So in that event, what happens here is we're hiring people. Sometimes it means them resigning from other positions and wanting to be able to notify their other schools or contracts being issued. So when we say June, the school committee would still be nominating right up through a meeting on June 21st. This would be anytime following that, as Don mentioned, working through July and August so that we can keep the process moving.
Yes, I will make the motion to allow the superintendent to offer teaching contracts during June, after the June 21st meeting, July and August 2021 for unfilled positions for the 21, 22 school year. Do I have a second?
I second.
A second from Amy. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? That's your name, Mr. Matt.
Thank you.
The next thing we have is talking about appointing the scheduling subcommittee. What are your thoughts on this, Matt?
Right now, I, I think it's important for us to make sure that it's representative through that. So I'm, I'm also open to any other ideas and suggestions. I do think it's something that we want to have all the various stakeholder groups represented. That would be obviously, we'd want to make sure we're getting student input. We'd also want to make sure we're getting a teacher input. We also want to make sure we're getting parent and family input as well as school committee input. So I think we'd want to be able to make sure that all of those various groups are represented, I think for us to be able to have a process that's going to be able to help us move forward.
Okay.
I, I wanted to say something about that. So I, I do feel like, I agree with you, Matt, that we need to have, you know, variations of people at the table. But I would go further to say, you know, that we invite, you know, kids with IEPs, Resource Room, applied classes, regular CP and AP so that we're not having, you know, that there's a variation of different types of learners. Because multiple classes might be great for many or for some, but may not be what's great for the majority.
I, I agree with you on that.
And I say that having five kids, two probably will be EP students, two, you know, regular, you know, college prep, and then one in the Resource Room. And so I can say that three of my five would not benefit from multiple classes.
And I'm not sure i- in terms of my, my thought, and I think that's a good point, Amy. We want to, I think the point is, we want to make sure, especially if we're getting student input, that it is representative. And so I'm not sure if that's involving the, the standard committee or at least making sure that we are getting the input and the feedback from all the various student populations and not just have it skewed to one, to one area.
If I can, I would like to add to that, that we should have teachers of each level also.
Well, that's, I think the one thing.
That teaches all. Right, you know what I mean, like, or.
The one thing we do, I think you have to be aware of, is not having too many people like directly at the table because then the discussion becomes difficult. I think it is ensuring that you have the people either there, they're going to be able to get the feedback, or that group determines the best method of getting the feedback from a wide variety.
Well, that's, look, even if I'm on a committee of two, I'm worried about the other person. So if you get more than 12, 20, 13, geez, you're not going to get it written down. So I think a voice representing a, absolutely.
Right, but when we're, you know, when you've got, I just, I'm, I'm concerned that we're not having kids with, you know, at different levels being represented.
Just putting it out there makes us aware.
Yeah.
So now it's on the radar. And I agree, we really do make sure we get all walks of people, all levels. And just making it, you know, out here tonight, we will, I think we have to be loyal.
Well, as we've talked about before too, like this, this is a big discussion. This has tentacles that reach out everywhere. So this isn't something we're going to have like two or three meetings, both are going to make a decision, and hey, this is the new schedule. I think this is going to be a, a committee that needs to get together, figure out the steps that are going to be taken. And I could see having a number of meetings with different stakeholders where you say, hey, we want students to come in and meet with this committee tonight.
Yeah.
We want, we want to make sure we get students from all over the place, pull all that information in. So they're not necessarily members of the committee, but we're reaching out. Same thing with teachers, same thing with parents. So we're getting all that input. And then this committee would be the group that's then going to kind of distill that, if you will, come up with a proposal for the school committee for a fall split.
I guess, I'm not sure if Matt, I'm not sure if Matt, if someone wants to know kind of the conclusion date, the decisions you made for the, almost start of the 22, 23 year, right?
I think it was January.
Yeah, I think what we're talking about is January.
You got to break down the timeline when you're ready to, if indeed that's the goal.
Yeah. Well, naturally, seriously, if you're talking about trying to do something for the 22, 23 school year, January is the deadline. We've got summer in between us and then, so really the work probably can't really get going in earnest until September. So it's September to January and not time we, you know, pulling all that info together.
And that's, just because that's the deadline, I think this is too big of a discussion to be looking at a target date if it has to go into another school year. Because like Jonathan said, we set up, that was not fun the last time we went over on this. And I refer it to take, if we have to take more time, take time to do it right, you know, let's be good.
And to be honest, having a freshman right now in the eighth grader coming up, they know, the skinny block has not even been given a chance yet. And my understanding is to really make changes, you need to see it at the minimum two years to see if there's a positive impact, you know, to cut, you know, get the. Right, just to fix it up if it gets a little bit wonky the first year. But that, you know, the second year, you kind of have a really good assessment of how it is. And so I'm, I'm feeling the pressure and I think I'm glad that we're all seeming to say that this is not something that we're wanting to rush into. January may not be, you know, depending upon how the meetings go and what we want. And it's not off the table, but that, you know.
And right, it's a deadline, but we can't make the deadline. I don't say just rush to.
It's penciled in.
It's penciled in, within a race.
For me, but it's all about doing it right. Like you need, this is a massive change. You need to make sure you're, you don't want to put teachers through another schedule change that maybe isn't the right one again, so we're having the same discussion three years from now. You know, this should be, hey, this is the schedule that's going in place, and it's going to be in place for five years minimum, you know, at least, just to say, we got to give it time, so.
Well, and it starts talking about having so many people involved in all the conversations. I think we had talked about doing the subcommittee thing.
Yeah.
Little subcommittees and then they come in and.
One, one voice from.
Yeah, exactly.
Kind of like one of the building, I know, I stayed real. Kind of like the building of this new high school. I was on a couple of the subcommittees and then there was one voice that would go to like the main meeting. You know, because it's true otherwise. I don't think we'll ever, right.
Yeah, it really needs kind of project management. If we'll just kind of, these are the steps we're looking through, this is where we gather this information, so.
And right along, right along with the project management, I think another critical component is we probably got to make this item, once we're up and moving, a regular school committee agenda item to provide updates. We want to make sure that we're doing that in our meetings and we're also keeping information as well as far as what we're working on and up to, just so that can keep people informed. Rather than having this work happening and people may not be aware about it. I think that piece of it is also really important as well, that we can let people know that what's going on, not only what a timeline and plan looks like, but also updates throughout.
Hey, Matt, hopefully, well, not hopefully, come next year. Come next year since we're not going to have construction updates, let's put this on the agenda.
Or COVID, when people get COVID, it's a long.
We're going to need stuff for the agenda first.
Sorry, sorry, Matt.
Okay, so our, our first step in getting the ball rolling is appointing a couple of school committee members to subcommittee. I'm very interested in it. I don't know who else would be. Paula's got her hand up.
Well, these ladies double-dip as parents, it's still a phase. I feel kind of like, I, I'm genuinely interested, but I don't know what I can really bring to it, I just.
And I, I agree with you.
But you agree that I shouldn't be on?
No, yes. See, I think I guess, we all agree you should be on the job.
Because if there's five subcommittees.
Well, we could also break it out once, but I think as the main, as the main. Be on a sub, subcommittee.
I'll bring lunch, I'll bring lunch.
See, I like to, I think I bring to the table the fact that, well, my kids just came through.
Right.
My son went through under the four block the whole time. He kept experiencing five block for a couple of years, so I kind of understand that from the other side of it. I think Paula comes through, it's great. So we will go with myself.
I would also like to be on it just because I have three different types of learners in my home.
And let's, let's do Amy as an alternate. I think we can only do two as the definite and then Amy as an alternate. Does that sound like a plan? I don't think we can do three or a subcommittee.
We can't have three or a subcommittee.
No, I think it's just two. Because that's why we only have two alone.
You can work together.
Yeah, it's fine, yeah, it's fine.
So you'll, you'll be on there as a.
Don't worry, I always my question. I have no problem getting my question answered, thank you very much.
You have the title, you're on.
Thank you.
Well, you're a little bit of a wallflower, Amy, so you just want to make sure we pull you out and try to.
I was in top 10, I think I was number 68, look at me now, everybody. Terrible SAT scores too.
Okay, so I think the appointment just comes under my power as the chair, right, Matt? It's not an official motion. So I'm going to appoint myself and Paula for the SHS, SRTC scheduling subcommittee. And then we'll get together and we'll.
And you're going to appoint Amy as an alternate?
Yeah, and put Amy as the alternate.
And then I, I think right now, this has been a real good discussion this evening. Also, if there's any ideas about representation on that, I think I'd like to have the whole school committee be able to kind of weigh in on that as far as if there's any other recommendations. As we try to look at that committee that we talked about that can kind of work on a process, out steps, and then obviously that will then allow us to meet with some of those identified subgroups that we've talked about so we can distill that information and be able to continue to report out on it.
Yeah, I definitely don't see us working in a vacuum. It is going to be a full group, but Paula and myself, we've got to be the point people.
And, and but maybe we have a workshop about it, to be honest with you.
Oh, definitely, yeah, this, I, I think there's a lot of steps that need to happen. So we really just kind of need to lay out that roadmap and make sure everybody's aware of it and start pulling that info in, so. It's not an easy, I think if it was an easy solution, you could go to like a bunch of schools and everybody would have the same schedule because that's what works really well. But I'm not sure what we're going to find out when we get out there.
I'm interested in studies.
That's a good question. Hey, Matt, I assume we can kind of start talking about who we want, but we're going to lose teachers for the summer fairly quickly, right? Do you anticipate we could have some teachers that might be interested in working on this over the summer? Or does that become now contractual issues? Or is this a bigger discussion to have later on?
Yeah, it's probably a bigger discussion, but I, at the end of the day, I think we just have to be careful that in the summer, you know, that might be an opportunity that we don't have people available. It doesn't mean the work has to stop, but I think we just want to also be mindful and be careful of that.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, Matt. Okay, moving on, old business, we have none. Resignations, I see a few here, Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, having Kimberly Blate as a kindergarten teacher at CGL, Megan Look, grade six at the middle school, and Shelley Wilbar, grade two at Willard, and also the grade level leader for grade two. And also Elaine Blanchard. Elaine has given third, over 30 years to the Sanford School Department. She tried retiring once, we brought her back with that. And but this time Elaine is planning to retire. And a big thank you to her for all of her contributions and everything that she's given to Sanford School Department.
It does, what's, everybody, staff appointments?
Yeah, a lot of these appointments are really for our summer, summer programming, whether that is through food service or whether that's through ed techs. But as far as summer ed tech in the extended school year program, appointing Janelle Brooks, Rachel Dorr, Christine Kelly and Caitlin McGinn. And then in terms of summer food service, Sarah Coffin, Helen Hemmenway and Lauren Williams.
Excellent. Staff coordinators?
Yeah, moving Diana Vermette from Resource Room, teacher at Willard, to the IEP coordinator position at Sanford Pride Elementary. And then Bonnie Carmen, moving from a grade one. And then Bonnie Carmen, moving from a grade one teacher at CGL to a kindergarten teacher at CGL.
Thank you, and now we have staff nominations.
Right, I'd like to nominate, I mentioned earlier in my report, the big emphasis on hiring. And here are our first batch coming forward regarding replacement positions. Kaylee Cobeth is a math teacher at Sanford High School. She comes to us from another school in York County, as well as when she was teaching down east in Washington County. She was their representative for Teacher of the Year. So I'm welcoming Kaylee, I'm proud to nominate her. Paige Collop also coming to us, moving to the area from Florida to be a grade two MCS teacher. Kayla Goodwin as a grade four teacher MCS. And Ally Smaya will be the health teacher for Sanford Pride next year. Those are all replacement positions. And then regarding for the new positions being created for the ESAR funds to help getting all of our kids back to school in-person learning. Leah Daniels, grade five at the middle school. Julian Gare, art teacher at the middle school. Oh, that's, that's, that's a new position that's in the budget. And then we also have Hannah Grant, grade three at Carl J. Lamb. Derek Moore, grade seven at the middle school. Gregory Willett, grade fi, uh, grade five at the middle school. And Melissa Young, special education SEAL team teacher for Sanford Middle School. Those are my recommendations for staff nominations.
I'll make a motion to approve the nominations as presented. Do I have a second? Second from Paula. Any discussion?
I do, actually. Matt, I just, I see the effective date September first, but school's starting on August thirtieth. Is that just a?
Yeah, it actually, actually officially starts for us with the teacher in service and new teacher orientation on the twenty fourth, Amy. But that's pretty much how we always schedule our contracts in terms of that. So I don't think that's going to be a problem. I can check on it just to verify, but I'm pretty confident that we're going to be okay, even if we're able to start sooner.
The other question is catch.
I don't want to get paid that week.
Yeah, they're turning it into a free. Okay, all in favor? All in favor of that unanimous, Matt? Okay, looks like we also have some renewal contracts.
Yeah, last, at our last meeting, we talked about those teachers nominating from probationary first year to probationary second year, or probationary second year, probationary third year, and those going from probationary to continuing contract. This, this meeting, we are nominating our administrators for renewal contracts. With that, you'll notice that there is a to be determined at Margaret Chase Smith School. That process is going to be starting next week in terms of interviews. Paula is going to represent the school committee for some continuity and consistency since she was also in for the Margaret Chase Smith principal process. And then you'll also notice that we don't have Nicole Ivy on this. And the reason for that is with the shared position that she has with SAD sixty, we plan to nominate Nicole at our next meeting. And at the same time, also look at the extending that MOU that we have with SAD sixty. So we'd like to wrap all of those into our future meeting. But other than that, these are our administrative team being nominated for the two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the nominations as presented during the second. Second from Mr. Rue. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor of that unanimous, Matt? Okay, policies and procedures, I see none. Items for future agendas, anything anybody wants to put out there?
I have a couple of things.
Yeah.
One, one thing I would just love to just talk about, just for future agendas, is something that we, that I helped at my job. It's, we do Voice of the Clinician, but what I'm thinking is doing some sort of Voice of the Staff, which is an online platform to get, you know, insight from the staff, whether you're a custodian, or food service, or administrative assistant, or a teacher, or an admin, that would come directly to the school board so we can get their feedback and their suggestions. And I know that for the staff where I work, it has been something that's been positive. And I think that I would, I think we should look into something like that. I did real quick an online search, and there's a online platform, it's called K- Twelve Insights. And it just says, give students and staff a voice. They use their feedback to create the ultimate workplace. And it's, I spent some time on it today, and I really think that we should, we're not supposed to use that, but something like that, I think, would be, would be beneficial.
So how does it work in, like, where you work? Is it an anonymous thing? Is it like you have to put your name into it?
So it, it's, it's not anonymous where I work. We've, we may make it anonymous, it hasn't stopped people because it's not a complaint platform. It's a platform for suggestions and feedback. And really, it's been very positive. There has not been any sort of negativity, keyboard warrior type activity. And people really like, like, a generalized question, and then somebody's like, oh, that's really easy. There's a response. And so we don't, we don't get tons. We thought we were going to get tons, and we were going to have, I was going to do a week, she was going to do a week, and we all kind of rotated, but it really hasn't been that many. But I just think it, I'd like for us to talk about it further.
You share the.
Yeah, I'll share the site, yeah.
Yeah, anything else? Do you have a completed?
I, well, I had another one that I know that we had talked about very briefly, but would like for us to talk further about having some sort of a leadership retreat, workshop, summit, whatever we want to call it, with administration and the school committee to set, you know, goals and, and kind of increase communication with them and with us. I just think, again, opens up a lot of communication. I just think that there's positivities out of this. And.
Yeah, yeah, that's kind of, we've talked about it a couple times, so.
We have, but it hasn't really gone, so I feel like I would like it with more of a, you know, more of a conversation piece.
Solidify it, I got you. Okay, anything, anybody else?
I actually, I, yeah, I'm, I'm really wondering if we can talk about the possibility of having some sort of director position that encompasses all the counselors.
That's something that actually came up, not this last budget cycle, but the cycle before, I think it was kind of floating out there.
Yeah, and I think especially now with everything, we, oh, we talked about a, you know, fiscal cliff, fiscal cliff. And now I'm thinking about, you know, SEL, social emotional cliff, coming up with all these kids coming back to school, and especially in the elementary schools. Where they are just, you know, they're, the level of emotional, I don't know, behaviors and everything that they face every day. I think there's a level there that's somewhat different than it is at the middle, high school. So, and just to be able to have a consistent or necessary.
I agree with you about the issue, the mental health issue, because it's really what it is that we're going to be facing. I'm not sure a director would really solve that, I mean, it's definitely more to talk about. I think it's just bandwidth, I think you just need people. You need more people to be able to connect with these kids one-on-one and help them out, so.
But when I, you know, as a parent, not just as a school committee member, but as a parent, when I try to find out, you know, what exactly is going on with SEL, and is it happening on a regular basis, and how, what I hear is that it's, it is, but it sort of isn't, and it's kind of, so everybody's just sort of floating around.
The communication part of it, as a parent, getting that information.
Yeah.
Okay.
So instead of having, you know, every school floating around separately, it would be nice to have.
A leader, a leader, yeah.
A senior student, yeah. But it's really, it's really back to that communication info, you know, who do you go to with the concern, like that.
Not just that, but for the counselors themselves, to be able to have somebody that kind of lead them in, you know, this is, these are our goals for this year. And this is how, you know, how are we going to implement so that they can have their own workshops, and really their own leader.
Got you. Anything else for everybody?
Yeah, so, looking ahead to the June seventh meeting, we are, I mentioned the MOU with SAD sixty for community adult ed, trying to get that wrapped up. Also, the immunization policy and the exemption procedure. We plan to get that in front of the school committee on the seventh. We also have the ESEA application, public comments, that we have to share. Cheryl will do the financials and also give an estimate for the year end. I'm going to try to see if I can have Gordy come to give us an update on summer athletics as well with that. And, yeah, so that's also looking ahead to June seventh.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Okay, calendar announcements, as we discussed earlier, we've got SRTC recognition night.
The date is right, but the day of the week is wrong. That is Wednesday, the twenty sixth, that's this Wednesday.
Thursday, the twenty, not Thursday, the twenty sixth. And the raid date is Thursday, though. This celebration is on Friday, the twenty eighth, at the high school. Adult ed graduation is Wednesday, the second, in the SPAC. Monday, the seventh, there's a SPAC meeting. School committee meeting next, I mean, June seventh, regular time. Senior awards are also June seventh. The budget referendum, June eighth, get out there and vote, support the school budget. Graduation is the ninth. Hey, Matt, actually, this didn't really, this was earlier, is there a raiding date for graduation? Or am I not even supposed to say that? I didn't say it, never mind, we're just going to move on. Last day of school is officially the tenth. We'll be doing a SWSSR meeting, sixteenth probably, and then a school committee meeting on the twenty first. Anything else, anybody wants to add to the calendar?
There is an eighth grade celebration at Sanford Middle School on June eighth also.
June eighth, we have a middle school celebration?
Eighth grade, eighth grade.
It sounds like fun to make it, it sounds like a good one to get.
Come on over.
And one of the things we're working on our administrator team meeting this week is end of the year activities, so we can kind of review those at our level. And then I'll be able to try to collate that and share that out with the school committee to make you aware of the different events that are happening at the end of the year beyond what we've already listed tonight.
All the field days? Okay. I guess, enter a motion to adjourn. Mr. Rue, read the motion, second for that, everybody? What's the second here? All the seconds in, any discussion? All in favor? All in favor, we're officially adjourned, thanks, everybody.